Okay, welcome everyone at six o'clock to the study session, City Council Strategic Planning Session of March 13th. No pledge or invocation for this, so we'll just go to call to order and I'm calling it to order and roll call.
Councilmember Almedez.
Here.
Councilmember Braco.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. Okay, so, opening remarks. This is part two, right? The first session that we had, January 28th, involved a lot of public input. Council members just put out on the table. It didn't have to do with whether there was majority support or not, just everything was listed out. Tonight is to try to hone in better on where the council majority is wanting to see things fall, right? Even if it means having to compete with something else. There will be a public comment, I know it's not on the agenda, but we'll have time for the normal public comment like we do for anything on an agenda after we get through this, or I'll try, if it's going too long, I'll try to interrupt council and let the public speak and then we can continue. But hopefully, we're gonna get through tonight's meeting so that staff has clear direction on what it is we want them to bring back, because that's really why we're here, is so that staff knows how to come back with the budget that we're gonna get. Okay, so with that, Jimmy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and the public. Thank you for attending, this is session two of strategic planning, and so tonight will be a little bit different than what we did the first time, because we're gonna finalize your inputs, and we're gonna go back and start building the budgets and bringing those back later down the road for you to approve. So, I'm gonna be doing this sitting, because last time I stood for a long time and threw my back out, so I'm gonna sit tonight. The work plans and the budget, a lot of this will be a repeat, and I, we always will, in every budget hearing or budget workshop, we'll have a budget update, so Harjo will do that for you here in a little bit, and then Leanne will be here to answer any questions. She'll do a little bit of talk on staffing and any questions you might have about anything going on with our staffing in the, in the organization. Those tend to be the two most common areas that council has questions on, and then, of course, the department head team is behind you if there's any subject matter items you'd like to ask them about, so they're here for you as well. Okay, so, the work plans and the budget, the legislative agenda and work plans identify special projects or programs for the next two years. That's important to point out the word "special" because that is on top of daily activities that we do, including just transactions or working with customers or just routine day-to-day business, so we certainly identify those as special projects. This informs the budget process by identifying funding needed to pay for materials or services to accomplish the work plan tasks. So every work plan task has a dollar amount associated with it, whether it's just time spent or it's actually money being spent. And then, it also helps us identify staffing resources needed to manage or deliver the project or program. So when we give you the position control list in May, that will be reflective of the work plan and how we're gonna have people where we need them in order to get done what we're telling you we can do. Okay, so, work plan development objectives. The goals for this session is to resolve pending discussions about council-initiated and community-initiated items and desires, to reach consensus on projects that would be completed with this budget cycle, and to prioritize tasks for each department, including council additions, to be achievable within the constraints of staffing and financial resources. After you're done this evening, staff will prepare finalized work plans based on council prioritization and prepare the proposed budget with the identified work plan tasks from tonight's meeting. At that point, we will, in early May, present you the draft budget, which will identify the work plan items and funding with council for consideration and adoption. So this isn't your last chance, but it, we're getting kind of close to there, because we have to build the department budgets. Okay, so, tonight, for the agenda, we will do a resource assessment, just a little bit of time talking about staffing and finances, and then we will talk about priorities and our strategies for priorities, including priorities by budget allocation. The categories we use to put our priorities in categories are in sections and ranking, and then questions to assist in evaluating the priorities, and that'll be any questions that you have, or any questions that we may have for council. And then, the work plans, the legislative agenda, will then be worked into the department work plans, so they'll all, the things that council are asked for right now, we'll make it into one department, or in my department, if it doesn't really fall specifically in another one. Okay, a quick reminder on the budget calendar. This, this process started in January, and here we are in the middle of March, and it will continue to the beginning of June, so tonight will be the next step, and in parallel, we're also working with our boards and commissions to get any budget input. We're looking at training requests, any activities that may help them do their job better, which is to advise the council, and we've gotten some good feedback on things that we'll include in the budget. Some have cost and some don't, but we're working with them right now, and we'll finalize that in the next month or so with all of our boards and commissions. We will return to you with our final financial update on May 1st, and we expect that to be a little bit different, because the financial update you're getting tonight is a little bit different. Things just change rapidly, and we want you to have the most up-to-date information and hopefully, maybe some good news. And then, we will do the capital improvement project workshop with you on May 3rd, where we'll go through all the projects that we're proposing, and then, on May 11th, the budget will be released to council and the public, and then about 10 days later, 11 days later, we'll do the council budget workshop and a community budget meeting, and then we will return on June 5th, asking council to approve not only the budget, but the work plans as well, and the capital improvement program. So a lot going on for now, but it will, it will end at the very beginning of June, and we'll be on our way for the next two years. Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna talk about resource, resource assessment, and our greatest resource is actually our people, and always has been, but there, there also are, it's where most of our budget goes as well. People, people cost money, and that's just what we have. So I'm gonna turn it over to Leanne to talk about this next slide. I think it's important to always have this reminder that the organization has changed a lot over the last 10, 15 years, and so Leanne has actually been here for all of it and can tell you what it was like back in, back in the day.
Good evening, council. So this slide is intended to provide you with some historical information, as well as where we are today with our staffing. The organization has changed over the years, but what we've done is, is normalize the organizational aspects of what positions are in which department to fit with where we are now, so that we, when we look at this slide, we can see an apples-to-apples comparison. This slide is reflective of two different recessions, the Great Recession in 2009 and the COVID recession that we experienced in 2020. So you can see, back in 2007, we had a total of 298 full-time employees spread across all of our departments. It was kind of the peak period of our staffing, serving a community of about 47,000 residents. Then, we experienced the Great Recession in 2009. We had a lot of cutbacks and layoffs, so then, in 2013, we took another snapshot. Our community had grown to 52,000 residents, but our, our workforce dropped from 298 to 238 employees. That's a significant difference, to have 60 fewer employees to serve a larger community. Then, we started kind of building things up again, and pre-COVID 2020, we built back up to 284 employees, serving 56,704 residents, and then, we took another little adjustment down in 2023 as a result of COVID and some reductions that we had to make. We are now a workforce of 268 full-time employees, serving a community of almost 60,000 residents. So you can see the changes from each department and, and the ups and downs that, that we've incurred in trying to get the job done, and many instances in the departments, there, there's no work that went away. We just had to figure out a way to do it with fewer people, and in some instances, that means it takes us longer to get certain things done, because we have less folks to do it. In other ways, we had to begin utilizing technology and other resources to find creative ways to be more efficient in order to get the job done. So all of our departments have done a, an incredible job trying to manage the workload and trying to do the best they can with the staffing level that they have. But we wanted to share this with you, so you can see some of the changes that have taken place, and, and like Jimmy said, our people are our, our number-one resource. We're a service organization. We deliver service through our employees and the people we have, and so it's important for us to not lose sight of this and to consider this when we're making these kinds of decisions. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding staffing levels that you have, you know, based on any information on this chart.
Could I just ask, these staffing levels are actual bodies, or are these staffing levels including positions that are not filled?
Including positions that are not filled. This is, this is budgeted positions across the board to, to have an even apples-to-apples comparison.
Right.
But, but in each one of these years at different times, there were different levels of vacancies that, that we had.
Of, of course, but what I'm trying to point out is that this pic, it's, it's never even been as good as this picture, because every position has not been filled. There are vacancies in all of the departments.
Correct.
Right, and still trying to serve, service the same number of people.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, some things are out of our control.
I understand.
With resignations or retirements, and so then we're, you know, refilling positions.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, now we get into the updates from Harjo, and to, he's had a lot of balls in the air when it comes to finance, a lot of changes, and some of them are good and some of them are bad, and so we always want to give you that update, so I'll take it away.
Absolutely. Good evening, mayor, council, members of the community. Harjo Sangha with the finance director. The next four slides I'll cover are just from a resource assessment perspective, you know, talking about the city's finances. You last received an update on the city's general fund forecast and a mid-year update back in January. Fast forward to now, we have had additional developments in, in our forecast, as well as, you know, we're kind of solidifying what our philosophy is kind of, you know, for the next couple of years. We have continued to kind of share with you since January that the, we are expecting a slowdown in, in the city's revenue, revenue basis. As such, you know, we're recommending any, any times of, any types of one-time revenues or any kind of fund balances really be utilized for one-time expenditures, and you have heard this from us, you know, since January onwards, and, and as such, the philosophy we're taking for the next two fiscal years is, we're going to utilize some of those one-time revenues as well as the fund balance to do some strategic one-time expenses around capital projects or complete other administrative projects, such as, you know, hiring consultants to complete policy documents that kind of guide our work plan, the bigger, long-term picture, if you will. And, you know, from an operating margin perspective, you'll see there is a little change in the operating margin, but not significant for us to afford additional staffing that we possibly would need. So we're gonna be strategic in what positions we evaluate based on the ongoing revenues and the needs of not just one department, but across the organization. So we'll be doing that approach as, as we embark on the budget here. The next slide, some of the significant updates here for you regarding the general fund forecast since January are, we have received two significant updates regarding our tax revenues. One is utility users' tax. We consult with our consultants that help us project out the next revenue forecast for the utility user tax. As a result, we're, we're projecting about an additional $500,000 on average to be added to the forecast as an ongoing revenue in the utility user tax, which is primarily a result, as I'm sure most of us have felt in our personal electrical and natural gas bills at home, that we're projecting these increases are going to remain. You know, they're not temporary, but we can expect, as a result, because we assess a percentage-based tax on these utilities, the city will indirectly benefit as well, so we expect our utility user tax revenue to go up. The other one is around property tax. There's a nominal increase that we're expecting, just change in the county's assessment role that they put out, about $115,000 moving forward, and one of the larger revenue categories, which we have over the last several years talked to council about, especially the last budget cycle, is the access ERAF, which is known as the Educational Augmentation Revenue Fund. The county provides the guidance on, you know, what to expect from an access ERAF revenue perspective. We were just notified last Friday that we can expect for fiscal year '24 an amount of $1.8 million. And you'll, you may recall, as part of the last budget cycle, as well as we've been communicating through the mid-year updates, is this ERAF is essentially a portion of the property tax that goes to this fund that's established by the, by the county to support local school districts. When the amount contributed to this ERAF is more than the minimum cost of funding local schools, based on the state code, which is a state-driven formula, the access funds are returned to the taxing entities, which includes the cities, the county, the special districts, and the county as well. In the recent years, you know, coming out of the '08 recession, the excess ERAF calculation yielded very nominal amounts, probably to the tunes of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Well, fast forward, due to the significant increases in property tax values, that amount excess ERAF calculated has turned into, you know, millions of dollars for, for cities, so that's caught the attention of the schools, the states, and the formula that has been utilized. So in recent years, it was, you know, put forward to legal challenges by, brought on by the California School Board of Association on how the formula is calculated by the counties, and there's been legal rulings on it, but the California School Board Association continues to appeal the decisions as recent as January of 2023. So the county continues to advise the cities and entities that are receiving this to budget cautiously, especially as an ongoing revenue stream. So as such, for now, we too are continuing to recommend that we treat this revenue on an annual basis, as the county advises us that we are expected to get this revenue. Now hopefully, once the matters are resolved, you know, we expect, the county should be able to give us some guidance to the certainty of counting for this as a ongoing revenue source, perhaps not at 100%, even a lesser percentage of a value, but we're not at, at that point yet, but if that changes, we'll definitely communicate that to the council. So, that's really the bit, one big significant update around property taxes. We don't have a sales tax update yet. We are expecting the next quarterly update in April, which is next month, so the May budget update that you'll receive will include the sales tax revenue forecast update. So this slide is an updated general fund forecast. Again, you last saw this slide back in January when we presented the mid-year, as well as the strategic session. The key items to note here are the changes to the fiscal year '24. Our operating margin has increased to 3.7. Notably, again, this is a $1.8 million that we're expecting because of the ERAF, and then, we were already expecting some repayment of contributions the general fund had made to, towards the solar project, which is about $700,000. We're expecting, once the project is done, and possibly in fiscal year '24, general fund will be repaid back, so that revenue should come back. And in the latter forecast years, you know, where we were seeing nominal to about 100 to 200,000 dollars, you're seeing the impacts of the additional property tax, as well as the utility user tax that's contributing to the operating margin. Again, this is a snapshot in time, as of today. As you know, we are under budget development, you know, there are, budgets will be put forward, will be also, you know, as we look at the good news, the revenues, we have to look at the expenses sides as well, and, and one of those sayings obviously is pensions for us. So the next slide, I'll slide right in, is, this is an update on historical and projected CalPERS UAL component. We have shared with you in the past that, you know, we continue to monitor how the CalPERS pension system is performing, especially during these volatile market environments. This slide essentially kind of shows you how we have tracked from 2020. Where are UAL unfunded liability, sorry, did you have a question? Unfunded accrued liability.
Yes, I wanted you to stop using the acronym.
Sorry. The unfunded accrued liability was at 99 million. After that, we had a, CalPERS investments experienced significant, robust performance on their investments yielding a 21.3% investment return, which dropped our unfunded accrued liability down to 73 million, which is attributable to the darker blue shade towards the bottom that you see. So we had, we were projecting to remain under or around $8 million, you know, with that good news. Fast forward to 2022, CalPERS did not do so well, they had a negative 7.5%, and sure enough, the impact, which is the gray dollar amount there, was that layer got added on to the unfunded accrued liability, had us projected to go up to about $12 million by, by 2031. Well, we're in 2023, we're fast approaching June 2023, the fiscal year end, and looking and talking to our financial consultants, as well as talking to CalPERS, where they're at currently, which is close to, you know, 0%. If that trend were to continue towards the June, and we were to hypothetically assume a 0% return, the teal color is what you would see added on to the city's unfunded accrued liability, beginning fiscal year 2026, and then peaking off into 2031. So as we talk about the theme of one-time, you know, strategic investments, as you know, the council made a strategic decision a few years ago about opening a 115 trust for pensions. We will be evaluating, possibly heading off that peak, if we can make some investments into that trust now, which possibly, by the time we get to the 2030, 2031 mark, we can utilize some of those returns in the 115 to offset the general fund contribution. So we're actively reviewing that as an option. We, again, won't know until June what, where CalPERS is going to land, but it is important, new information that has come to light, so we definitely thought that this deserved to be brought in front of you. Any questions?
I'll, I'll ask one.
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we all understand what this slide is saying, okay? This, this slide is saying that we, we can or cannot, will we be able to afford our workforce come 2030 if we don't set money aside into the 115 trust? Or will we be reducing our workforce?
I think as, as the unfunded accrued liability increases, the city's required mandatory contributions increase. As such, something's gotta give, so, you know, whether it's, you know, less expenses for discretionary purposes, or, you know, additional revenue source, I guess, you know, would be an option, but again, you know, the first stop obviously is, we have to make those payments, so something's gotta give from an expenditure standpoint, so prioritization of existing resources, so.
Okay, but we have the revenue that we have. I mean, that's the revenue that we have. Discretionary expenses, nothing, nothing amounts to the magnitude of our workforce. Our workforce is 90% of what goes out of our, out of our general, okay. I just wanna, I wanna make, wanna make sure everybody's understanding these numbers, because sometimes when numbers are so big, it's hard to comprehend, and it just kind of glosses over and you don't really get it. I'm just asking that everybody get it, okay? That what's, what's happened is, is that kind of a shortfall, and it's basically a financial cliff, right? We've doing this in other agencies as well, and that you can't just keep pushing it off and not be prepared to reduce your workforce. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Harjo. Okay, so, as we've already stated, our, our focus on the budget will have some ongoing costs, but very minimal due to the lack of room in the five-year forecast, so we will focus on one-time expenditure needs when we return to your budget, and I'll go through these really quickly. But for infrastructure, we will, we will be recommending that we continue the $2 million annual contribution that brings 3.8 million in total annually to the street program. It's been very successful, and that would, that would fund years three and four of the five-year improvement plan that council had already approved. We will use one-time money for that. Some other things that we need to address in the community include park restrooms. If you're a visitor of the parks, you've seen what's been going on with them. They've been set on fire, destroyed. It's just, it's time to upgrade those so they are more durable. Roof replacement repairs, and then another significant capital improvement that is long overdue and would really be a good use of one-time money is the fire station retrofits, which is a lesonimus and chestnut. Years ago, they were looked at with several issues for their seismic ability, but also, what's happened over time is, they know, they are no longer just places where you store vehicles and people sleep, they have turned into quasi-medical facilities. We have a much diverse workforce. They were never built for, you know, diversity in any way, shape, or form, and so it is time, in my opinion, and, and what the studies have told us, that we need to, we need to address that. So those are some of the things that we'll have in one-time infrastructure investments coming up in your recommended budget. We've also discussed ad nauseam the future infrastructure planning, and so we have acknowledged that Civic Center Master Plan is something that staff believes is a, is a good use of our one-time resources to plan for the future. We have a lot of land, we have some old buildings, and it's time to start looking at what we can do with those. And then also, as part of that, which I will include as part of the Civic Center Master Plan, the youth community center, that has been spoken about consistently over the last few months, and looking at what our opportunities are with this location as well. And then some other things that we, we'll invest in, not, you know, because we really need, we have to, and some things in fire and equipment and supplies, public safety, body cams, a lot of this equipment's been around for a while, it's time to replace it, and, and things like the oxygen mask, flot cameras, which are like the license plate readers that, that help identify vehicles that have, you know, done crimes. So those investments have saved time for our public safety personnel, and that's where we are able to get pretty good investment with one-time money, because that's what we can afford. Planning, a lot of things have been talked about with planning. Planning has a very large workload, and some of these items on here that have been identified with specific plan for downtown, strategic plan, climate action plan, TDM, vehicle miles, travel policies. We've had in previous work plans is looking for grant funding. I think we've looked long enough for some of these, and that we're going to go ahead and recommend that the city fund those, so we can get some of these plans updated and implemented, and we have the one-time funds to most likely be able to do that. And then, the last part, anything that goes from the downtown committee that we've already allocated, which includes downtown lighting, downtown pop-up park will require funding. Property, was it property, property-based improvement district formation cost, we've been working with that with the downtown about having an assessment for enhanced services. That is something that will eventually require the downtown businesses to vote for, but we have to upfront that money and time and effort, and we've been doing that so far. So these are things that you will see in the budget that you receive in, in May, and will be reflected in our work plan as well. I'll pause for a second if anybody has any questions. Okay. All right, so let's talk a little bit about how we prioritized the work plan. You may not realize it, but your, your priorities a lot of times are set by where you spend your money, and, and so when we look at the budget, we know kind of where the money goes, is that's where council's, you know, priorities are, because priorities are kind of forced on you. You have to have a fire department, you have to have a police department, but you, the other things, some of them you don't have to have. And so in our general fund, 60% of every dollar that comes out of, of the general fund is, goes public safety to police officers, firefighters, and then about another 14, 50% goes to public works, which is streets and, you know, those kinds of activities. So 75% of your budget is already prioritized just by what you've already done, and there's always an, you know, there's always a desire to put more officers, more firefighters, more, more workers, but that changes that percentage, because the, it's not moving enough revenue-wise. And so just to give you a really total of the entire city, when you look at the top, police, fire, public works are really the top three financial priorities, and then down below, we have some other things like economic development, and, you know, officers and garbage, things that we did not previously really pay for, especially when it comes to, you know, some of the economic development activities, some of the services we provided. So that money that we're spending down here is just part of the pie that we don't spend somewhere else. And again, I'm not making any judgments or any recommendations here, it's just the math is telling you what goes on. And so, at one time, you know, we had over 2, 2.4 million dollars going into recreation, that COVID required us to then, are we gonna prioritize some public safety activities over that transfer? And that's just the tough decisions that, that have to be made, but this is where you are, you know, right now in your budget, and I don't suspect that we'll see those percentages change greatly, but there is always the desire to do more everywhere. Okay, so we've already used this, this categorization. It's very simple for us as staff to kind of explain to the council and the public how we really, you know, look at our work, and there are things that we have to do. There's the federal, state, county law compliance requirement, which the city has no discretion to avoid or defer police and fire, but also wastewater treatment, I mean, I'm sorry, stormwater, stormwater treatment, not wastewater, stormwater. Those are all general fund activities. Wastewater's different, because it's an enterprise fund, it has its own funding mechanism. So those are things we have to do if we don't. If we don't do them, we'll get fined, we'll get, you know, it'll be a big liability for the city. And then next is core, what we should do, a fundamental aspect of a department's purpose. It is what we do as a city, vital, but not mandated. You can argue some of these categories are not what they once were, and the term being kind of discretionary, in a lot of instances, is now becoming mandatory, state laws are just changing policies. So housing is something that is becoming, moving up that ladder of core and in some instances, mandatory. And then last is discretionary. That's what we spend quite a bit of time talking about, is the things that council has discretion to do, those are the things we'd like to do. The city, it's done by the city for the public good and is usually council and/or community-driven. You do not have to have a recreation department. Would never advocate not to have one, but just from a business kind of, you know, point of view, you don't have to do it, but we do, and that's how you allocate your resources. And so that's how we categorize the work that we have, is that we, we say that the mandatory is the things that we're going to focus on, the core is the things that we're working on in parallel, and then discretionary is when we have to kind of really prioritize because it is what is community-driven, council-driven, but sometimes there's just not enough room left to get to those things. So when we list our work plans, I'm going to kind of tell you what we do and how we feel, how we as staff feel about that. And that may not always be for everything, but in the majority of the time, we believe mandatory activities should come first. Due to the requirement, compliance with laws, the enforcement agencies, the rulemakers do not care if we have staff workloads or adequate resources to do it, it is mandated, and so we have to find a way to do so. So for we as staff feel that is our first priority are the mandatory items. Next, we evaluate requested additions. Is the requested addition, and that could be from council, that could also be from the departments, is that requested item a legal requirement, something that's expected of the city, or something that council would like to accomplish? So when we go through mandated, core, and discretionary, ask yourself those questions. Are these things we have to do? Are the things we want to do, or are they just, you know, things that are a good function of a city? Are the new tasks more important than one, some, or all of the current projects in the work plan? As you're going to see here shortly and you've seen before, we have a lot of items in this work plan that we have now that are going to get carried over. Council's added a few during the last two years and actually advocated for adding a few more in January. So when we ask you about these projects, we're going to ask you, are they more important than some of the other ones you already have? Do you want those moved up? We'll do what you ask us to do, but we're going to adjust everything accordingly. And then does the city have sufficient staff time, financial and operational resources to deliver on an item? As we've already shown for some of these things on one-time, we believe we have the one-time financial resources, but in many instances, we just don't believe we have the sufficient staff time or the resources to deliver the project in a quality manner.
Okay, Jimmy, can I interject here? I'm assuming you're ready to move on to the next slide? Okay, so at this point, I would sort of like to ask the council if there's anyone who feels that there is an item, that any item that is discretionary ought to, for whatever reason, outweigh something that is core. Because we're here to give direction to staff, and so before we even get into the specific things that we're going to look at, I would like to make sure that the council has consensus that the order of importance is in fact mandated, that one's obvious, core, and then discretionary. So is there anyone who wishes to challenge that order? Okay, I don't mean to take a lot of time here, I just want to make sure that, because this is how we're proceeding, we're telling staff that obviously mandated has to come first, and then core services ought to come next, they always have, but I'm, that's why I'm asking the question, and then discretionary, because there, when we get to the rest of this meeting, you are going to see just how many things there are and how it's going to, it's going to result in choosing. And so I just want to make sure that we're directing staff consistently.
I mean, I think that this is the ideal, right? That's the ideal order of priorities.
Well, that's how we're directing staff.
That's the way it should be, but I think as we look at the things that are discretionary and the importance that they ordered by the community, right, and things that we've heard from the community whenever we sit up here, I think, yeah, I don't think we can like make a blanket, well, I can't make a blanket decision like that, like I, I think there are things that are discretionary that might, you know.
Be more important than core to you.
That I might find as important as core items, yeah.
Right, but we're, yeah, it's not the as, it's, we have to, we have, when you prioritize things, that means you're putting them in a certain order. So they, if they're the same, well, I know, but when you're saying as, that's not.
And I understand these definitions as well, and what should be our ideal when it comes to prioritization.
Okay, does anyone else feel that discretionary items carry the same weight as core?
Well, I guess I'll chime in here as well. I would agree with Councilmember Armendaras. I mean, there are some discretionary items that I may not put up as mandatory, but I feel that they might play more of an importance or can be moved up a little bit there, but obviously when we get to those, we can, we can have further discussion.
Yes, when we get to each one of them. I'm just trying to set the stage that we all have the right expectation, that one, things are going to come at the expense of something else, and that that's what everyone's going to have to be weighing.
And I guess that comment there kind of scares me, because I understand what this means, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, but I don't want it to be where when we get to these different sort of categories and say, nope, we can't do it because mandatory and core come before everything else, you know, and.
Well, mandatory is not a choice. That's what it means, yeah.
I understand that. What I'm saying is I don't want us to put us, ourselves in a position and say, nope, we can't, because we've already have these items and whatever's discretionary, we can't, you know.
Okay, so that's two councilmembers, I'm trying to get a consensus of the council.
Well, I think what we need to do is we need to see what's in discretionary so we can decide, because the order is fine.
Okay, so what?
It's hard to be so rigid, you know, and move forward.
I'm not trying to be, okay, let's never mind.
Because you're asking us to, to be in consensus.
I'm asking for, about the categories, not about the items.
We have to agree to those categories. The categories are fine.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that's the ideal.
You don't have to, that's what, why I was asking, so I'm sorry I asked. Good, it's mandatory, core, discretionary.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, so one thing that we will go through with council when you see the department work plans is that there are items from this current year that have not been finished or maybe in progress, or are, you know, ones that we feel we need to talk about, but these are the ones that are remaining. And as you can see, like economic incentives, job protections, it's coming to council in April, access to technology is coming in April as well, and so we're going to try to work through these, and then some of them are, not only were they originally legislative items, but now they're a committee item as well. So you're going to see them in multiple places, and if you see it in multiple places, it probably means that we will, where we're able to, is to prioritize those, because they've, they've been noted in several places. But those are the ones that are still outstanding. We gave you an update at the last council meeting about these, so I'm not going to go through these, but I'll just remind you of them, and when you see them on the work plan, you'll know they didn't, they didn't go away.
Jimmy, for clarity, so when you say, obviously, these are the ones remaining, and we're going to prioritize these, I guess my question is, is these are all items that we as a council decided we wanted to see happen? And now we're here saying today, well, we want these to happen, but now we have to decide if we really want them to happen or not, right? So I don't understand how we can decide on some things, say, we want this, we need this, and then down the road say, well, let's figure out if we really truly still want it, you know, and I understand you're saying, due to staff, whatever it may be, but, I mean, if these are priorities that we set way back when, then they should continue to be priorities and not us deciding if we want to move forward with them or not. So that's my take on it, because when we sit up there and we just talk about and discuss and decide, I'm moving forward with the impression that every single item on there is going to get done. Maybe that's just me.
I think the intent here is to show you what we intend to do, and if council, you know, as we're working through this, doesn't add a lot of things and doesn't switch their priorities, that's what will get done. So that's where you'll get kind of the pushback from me to say, you already approved this, there's a lot here and you want to add this, so I need to know, you've already approved that, do you want to continue to approve that, because that's in progress, or that has the potential to be completed, but now you're adding something new, something's got to give.
Let me try to comment on that, councilmember, because it's a fair point, completely fair point. And I think, at least what I'm hearing staff trying to tell us, is that the items that they, that they showed us as one-time expenditure needs are things that staff will have to talk about as a council, but they are all things that staff plans to come back and show us how we can fund, all of those things, okay? Then the items that you see here are things that this council has already approved, the majority of the council has supported and has asked staff to bring back, so they're shooting for these things as well. But as you know, in January, we added even more, that were not necessarily council majority approved, they were, maybe one person said it, but it's still out there, and those are the things that we have to, we, all of those things cannot fit within the money that we have. So that's where it's going. It's not telling you that these are things that are going away, it's saying that if we're going to, do these things still have the same level of importance, given the new things that have been brought up? That's, I think, the best way to say it. Okay.
Well, to me, when you put the word remaining up there, it makes it sound like they're not even in the mix. That's how I'm looking at it, it's like, hmm, we said we wanted to do it. You know, I'm sitting here saying, we paid 250,000 for a parking management plan, and now we might not do it. I don't think you mean that, though, when you're explaining it. I think, I think all those items you're trying to say are still very much in the running.
I'm trying to say we don't have room for the new things that have been added.
Because of those?
Yes.
Okay, I guess remaining is the confusing word for all of us, you know, maybe also included.
These are on the work plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, these will all be on the work plans that you'll see coming up, and so I'm just trying to make the point that you've given this direction, and we're going to continue on that direction unless you give us a different direction. And that's what you have the opportunity to do, or you can just say, keep going your current path.
Okay.
We also have some remaining council-initiated follow-up items, the downtown committee, which was, you know, deferred to tonight's for a discussion as well. There is a place you can do that later, you could do that now if you'd like to. I know there were some thoughts on that, there was some discussion with council about how that's formed, and so I can either do that now or we can do it later in the agenda when we get to the work plan.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on that. So you all know, I mean, when I was pushing for this a while back, and everybody else that was involved, I mean, part of it was for us to create, the creation of a standing committee was for that committee to look at all projects that had, that related to downtown and to get input, not just from one group, but all groups, from businesses to residents to, you know, business owners, and really take a look at these projects and say, you know what, we as a collective group will go out and see which ones are important for our community, not just businesses, but our community, and then come back with recommendations and sort of move that, move forward in that direction. So, you know, looking at the downtown committee, I think, again, it plays an important role because you have so many individuals from business owners to residents to community members to whomever it may be, councilmembers that are in part of this, making recommendations back to the council and saying, this is what we got from talking with the community, these are the important items that the committee would like to see happen, and then we bring those back. So instead of saying, well, we can't do everything, you know, I guess we decide on what we think we want now, and then the standing committee can almost come back with other recommendations. So that's kind of what I had envisioned for the downtown.
Tonight, we're supposed to discuss the structure of it, right? So we're already on the next step.
Oh, I have a whole 10 pages on that too, but yeah.
I'm sure you do, that's why I'm pushing you along. Let's talk about the structure of it, let's jump into it if you all want to.
Yeah, so when, for me, when I, you know, obviously, when I'm looking at the downtown committee, you know, I'm looking at it as, it's a cross-section of downtown stakeholders, but also members of the community, from councilmembers to city staff, to members of the downtown business community, property owners, partner groups, and representatives from the, from the community. So it's, it encompasses everybody, and everyone that's part of this committee will give input, give feedback, and then we bring that as a collective group back to the council and saying, this is what the community would like to see. So we're not allowing one group or, you know, a small group of individuals determining what we want to see in our downtown.
Okay, I guess I.
I did skip ahead the couple of slides where, like I said, downtown committee was on there a couple of times, so I brought.
Yeah, I think what we're, right, I think what we need to do, or what we thought we were going to be doing tonight, is the more, as Councilmember Armendaras was saying, the more specifics, like who are we going to have on that committee from the council, how frequently is that committee going to meet, and are we, and reminding that we are sticking to staff's involvement being just to notice the meetings, for a staff person to attend, to be able to take the minutes, and to, that's it, just to notice and take the minutes of the meeting, and that any projects come from us. So one step at a time, I guess ought to be who on this council wants to be on that committee, it is not limited to three, right? It is not, because it's going to be, so who wants to be on it?
I would.
Okay, so that's Councilmember Tovar, Councilmember Klein, myself, Councilmember Marks, Councilmember Armendaras. So that's five.
Right.
Okay, so that's the committee then, if everybody's, okay?
If I may add, Mayor, after, yeah. So, yeah, no, and I'm fine with that. So what I envisioned for this group, it would consist up to, say, 12 members, obviously city staff, councilmembers, again, property owners, business owners, community members, and a representative, obviously, from our local organizations at the chamber, the GDBA, so you'd have one representative from each of those groups, so you have.
Okay, so we have, we know we have one staff, a city staff person who's going to be there. Is it for us to decide who else is a part of the committee here that's not part of the city?
I think.
Or do we do that at our first meeting?
If we come up with the, I'd be more comfortable if we come up, if we came up with the seats that we want, right? Not specific names, of course, but the type of seats that we want and the number of members that we want on the committee, right, a committee of nine or, you know, an odd number, and then define them, right, a downtown resident, a downtown association, a very small business owner, a small business owner, things like that, just define seats.
Yeah, no, I'm in agreement with that, and I also look at it as a, you know, again, you can all disagree with me, but at least a monthly meeting, you know, where we meet monthly.
At least to get it going.
Okay, so we're, we're jumping, so first, let's do one thing at a time, okay? As far as the membership goes, Jimmy, I'm going to need some help with how we go about that, because.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please, because what I'm hearing is like, how would you choose the one business member and the one person from the public?
Like an application process.
My suggestion is that although we can talk about it tonight, we should actually form a committee at a meeting where it's a separate agendized item.
Okay.
And the formation of the rules should come at that time, we can talk about it.
Okay, very good.
But we should not take action on it, because there are cases on that issue.
Okay, so we know we have five councilmembers interested, does that include the frequency of the meeting? Andy?
Again, I think we should, we can talk about all kinds of things like that here.
Okay, well, but if we can't make any decisions, we might as well wait.
Reopen the public discussion as an agendized item at another meeting, including all the details and then be established.
Okay, then I guess there's not much we can do tonight, except have identified the five councilmembers who are participating.
Well, I, no, and I'm not disagreeing, but I think, Andy, you correct me if I'm wrong, we can have the discussion of, and like Councilmember Marks said, you know, if we decide that, you know, we're going to start off this committee meeting once a month, and moving forward, if we decide that, you know, we don't need to be monthly, then we can almost adjust that. But I think that we should at least walk away here with the individuals that want to be on it and say, okay, we're going to start meeting monthly until further notice. Is that something that?
Okay.
Well, again, it's perfectly fine to talk about those things and discuss them and come up with a game plan, however, the actual formation of the committee with all of its rules or whatever you decide to formulate should be at the next agendized meeting as a separate item.
Should be voted on.
And voted on, yes, as an action.
I'll flush it out here, but the official voting.
That's correct.
All right, so then, I'm not asking to vote on it, but can we get consensus if individuals are interested in meeting monthly? I mean, we can at least come up with that, right? So.
Sure, well, we're just discussing it, we're not.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I mean.
I think monthly sounds like a good idea.
Right.
Okay, so I would support quarterly, I would do the opposite. I would do quarterly first and then go to monthly as needed, because I think you lose credibility if you start, it's okay, we don't need to argue it back and forth, because I know you want monthly, I know, okay? I'm just saying that I would, I would suggest quarterly and then go to monthly, as opposed to the other way around.
Yeah, no, and I, yeah.
Is that something we could hash out at that next meeting?
Yeah.
And work through that?
Yeah.
But I think Councilmember Tovar is asking to hear every inclination, so that's why I would mind.
And if I may just add, and again, I respect what the mayor's saying, but I think with the number of projects that we have in the pipeline and, you know, really being proactive here to meet quarterly in the beginning might do us a disservice, because there's so many things that we can be doing right now, and if we're waiting for those.
And if we're waiting for those quarterly meetings, then things get kind of put on the pipeline.
Well, that's, I guess, the difference. I don't think you need to be waiting for the quarterly meetings to do stuff, but, okay.
So we meet in April? Okay? And we can shake that off?
Okay. Yeah. If that's enough of discussion here.
Well, I want to repeat that back to you, so that way I make sure I understand. We will return in April to council with the formation of the downtown...
With a separate meeting.
Well, in one of the regularly scheduled April meetings, with the formation of the committee, and then giving you the options about what you're going to discuss and what you're going to adopt, which will include your meeting frequency, number of council members, and you can then re-volunteer at that point, number of who else makes up the committee in that direction, and then all the other details you want. We'll give you the format. We'll give you the opportunity to discuss, and then you can vote, and then we'll be on our way.
And the process for how the other people are gonna... Who are on the committee.
Yeah.
This could take a year just for that.
Yeah. If we could, Jimmy, include that if there's gonna be designated seats for downtown businesses, that at least one be a let-in-own business.
Yeah, I would leave that up to the council at that date. Just select who the other members are. But that wouldn't be...
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. All right. I'm gonna go back. Okay, so we finished the downtown committee. We... Beekeeping was mentioned at the last strategic planning meeting. That is still on the work plan as a discretionary item. Coming up soon is the city proclamation policy, drive-throughs near residential areas, and then the subject of overhead downtown lights, which was brought up at the last meeting to continue discussion at this meeting. I'll open this up to council if there's any of these items that you want to discuss or have thoughts on, and we can work that into where it falls in our work plan.
Well, I would like to discuss the drive-throughs near residential areas. That's a health issue. So I would really like to see that stay on. And I don't see that costing the city any money. It's just an ordinance that we would pass if the council agreed to say, no drive-throughs right ne... And then you clarify the term "near." We're talking right next door to residential, so...
And not that it rises to the level of that, but we do need an official proclamation policy. So I think that needs to be in there, because we need to be consistent, right? We can't do it one way here and another way there. We need to have a policy that makes it uniform, so that every request for proclamation is considered equally and fairly in all.
And there's no money involved in that one, so that should be a fairly equal one.
Well, it's just staff time. It's staff time to bring that back.
Both are staff time. Would there be any costs associated with the drive-through policy, besides staff time?
It would be staff time, and depending on what kind of public outreach, what you're getting yourself into, but I couldn't tell you. That's what we would bring back. It is already on our work plan. So again, if council doesn't add a lot more, that'll continue on its path.
That's already on... So we could just let it keep evolving, as it's going, instead of adding?
If we don't... If we don't... Like, what happens to these if we don't talk about them or ask you to keep them on today? Do they fall off, or do they just keep pushing, getting pushed to the end of the next calendar year?
Well, I think some of them... Well, I can go through each one. Downtown committee, we've already gotten direction for that. So that's on its way. Beekeeping is on the list of our discretionary work plan, agenda items. I can tell you it's gonna stay mostly low until it gets elevated. But again, we take our direction from council. City proclamation policy is one that will come to council shortly, just because we're getting requests for proclamations. It's something we, as staff, have to advocate, that we need some direction here. So that's not going to drop off. Drive-throughs near residential areas, again, that wouldn't drop off unless we just get inundated with a lot of requests from council for additional planning, community development items, and we're like, okay, which ones do you really, really want here? And then overhead downtown lights was just mentioned at the last meeting as a discussion item. So it's not on our work plan. It hasn't been added to anything. It's just was a request to have another discussion.
I... Just 'cause there were so many folks here advocating for beekeeping policy, so many, you know, residents and young people and scientists and folks from all over the, you know, our community. It just seems like it's an important thing, you know? And I don't want to make everything a priority, right? Because then nothing's a priority. But there was a lot of community interest in that online and here in our chambers. If we could do something this year, even if it's at the end of the year, you know, I think it's important.
Mayor?
Yes? Oh, sorry.
No, I'm just curious, as far as what we... The expectation as in doing something would be keeping just identify, or...
We need a policy.
A policy.
We don't have a policy. Yeah.
Well, we have a policy. She means we need... She's suggesting that we change the agricultural use policy within city limits. That's what it is. It's changed... We have a policy. It just does not allow for beekeeping in the city limits.
That's right.
Right.
So what's the percentage, then, of the need of people within the city limits to justify doing that?
What's a percentage of it?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, we don't have that study, right? But we do have a lot of people in chambers speaking on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, sorry, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. And I promise I'm not gonna get heated tonight, so don't worry, Councilmember Marks. But I do want to talk about the overhead lighting, because, again, I did my own personal survey outreach to not only local businesses, but community members. And the reason why, again, when this... Initially brought this up to the ad hoc committee, I was looking at, how do we distinguish ourselves from other cities, especially the city down the road that we're always being compared to? And yes, I love the lighting on the trees, but having overhead lighting, I mean, sense of, you know, security, improved visibility, I mean, just the wow factor, the attraction of our downtown. I mean, what's the biggest issue that we have, besides vacant buildings, is that we cannot attract our own residents to downtown. And by having an attraction, something that people are gonna say, go check out our downtown, I think it's beneficial not only for the city, but for our business owners, and it's probably a reason why people may come downtown, you know? And again, just looking at the benefits of this, and I understand, you know, we have $100,000 budgeted for lighting, and again, I mean, but to do the trees and to go overhead, and again, those that have not seen that in cities like San Diego, Long Beach, and other cities, it's a beautiful view, and it's a reason why people want to come downtown. And all of you know, when we're downtown and we're talking to business owners, you know, they're saying they're struggling, they're struggling. Let's do something that's gonna attract people to our downtown. It's not the solution to everything, but it's a reason why people will come downtown. And I'm sick and tired of always being compared to Morgan Hill. Let's do something that's different from them. And I think by having this downtown, you know, it's gonna increase, obviously, people's safety. It may deter some of the homeless individuals that go there, because it's the darkness, you know? It may bring families, kids out there, and it... With that, it increases businesses to our... To all our local businesses. So for me, again, I don't want... I want this to be a priority, because I think it's beneficial to the city. And again, if it means that we do it in two phases, or whatever it may be, we do the lights first on the trees, but then we come back and we do the overhead lighting, I guarantee it's gonna be a downtown that people are gonna want to come down to. So I hope that we can have a discussion on this.
You promised not to get heated.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna say that we put it on the agenda for our committee, our downtown committee, because the cost of it is gonna be way more than $100,000. And Jimmy already got the wheels turning to do the tree lighting, and that's already in progress. So why not provide beautiful lighted trees already downtown that are gonna be an improvement in the near future? Meanwhile, we work on getting funding for... Or a grant or something for the overhead lights. Because I do agree with you. Downtown San Diego, Long Beach, they're beautiful. Lots of cities that have that type of lighting or more creative lighting, they are. They're outstanding and attractive. But that's not something I think we can do in the short term. I think the immediate improvement that Jimmy's working on right now should be our... Should be left as is and in motion, because it's in motion. And then we put that on the agenda for our downtown committee. You know? So we... Because it's gonna need a lot of money, more than $100,000.
I also agree. I just want to clarify something, in case anyone misinterpreted. The lighting in the trees is not $100,000. Jimmy gave to the ad hoc committee, or not to the ad hoc committee, to downtown area $100,000 for whatever, you know, they wish, planners, benches, I don't know. And lighting was part of it. So the actual... One of the bids that we got, and I think we're going with the company, is what, $28,000 for the tree lighting? So just rest assured, that's not a $100,000 project when you see it going up.
Well, that goes...
I think Councilmember Hilton had a question now. Yes.
So it looks like two of these we can put on to the downtown committee, right? And take that off staff's list of things to do, right? Until you choose, as a committee, to elevate it, the overhead downtown lights. But the beekeeping and the proclamation and the drive-throughs, I'm fine with those remaining. You know, I... You know, I supported those. I didn't initiate any of those, but I understand the need to go through all three of those. But out of those three, I do not see those needing some big, huge community outreach. I don't expect that from staff. I don't know if my fellow colleagues would expect that either. But those are simple legislations that just do in regular public notice and however we get our regular information that we can legislate here. So I don't see that as a big... Any of those three as a big, heavy lift for staff. Thank you.
I'd agree with you on that. Three and four, I can see, because they're already in progress. Two, it's, again, looking at that.
Okay. Jimmy, I don't know if you're getting what you need out of this, or you're getting what you need. Then I don't need to say anything else, because, yeah. To me, I don't know that I agree with what should be community outreach or not. Just because we get 20, 30, even 40 people in council chambers does not suggest that the rest of the community is aware that you're doing something. So if you're gonna change something like an agricultural ordinance or a drive-through policy, whatever the rules are for public outreach are the rules, whatever you have to do. So I would have to defer to staff to tell us what that means that they have to do.
I think a good point is brought up. And being in this business for as long as some of us have, we tend to see things, and I'll just be honest with you, beekeeping, sounds very simple. I believe it's extremely complicated. But I'm willing to make it simple if, at the end of the day, it's not staff that takes the hit for not having enough public outreach. So I, on my work plan, have a process to work with council. And how do we get council-initiated items in front of council shortly, quickly, and then decide if they have a life of their own? And then if I bring beekeeping up and I say, I recommend you do extensive outreach, and you're like, we are not gonna follow your recommendation, we think you should just go for it, and I'm gonna, you know, I'm going to rely on council then to say, this is what we directed staff to do. And that can happen.
Can I make a comment? And I think that's true. And I think that's something that Councilmember Marks and Brock have asked you on a couple of these items, is just like, don't... We don't... I don't expect much. Let us take the heat. We're the elected body. Bring information for us. Let us flush it out in one meeting, and then let us take the hit. And I understand you guys get the calls. We get the calls, too. You know, I mean, that happens. And if you want to say specifically, this is a legislative item that came from city council, do it.
I mean, we'll take ownership of it.
But I think we're asking for parts of that, to get that off your back, to don't worry about the beekeeping. Let us worry about it. We're the ones that brought it up. Thank you.
Yeah. I would totally disagree with ignoring public outreach. To me, that is why we're here.
I never said ignore public outreach. If that's the only thing you heard, then I'm sorry.
That's what I heard.
That's not... That's not what you heard.
I heard that we'll take the heat, we'll decide not to do it, and we'll take the heat for not doing it. I do not wish to take that heat. Okay.
That's not... That's not what I said.
Okay.
But we also... We talked about it once already at a council meeting. And when we get a policy, we'll talk about it again. So the public does have opportunity to weigh in.
Yep.
You know, so often, we have community outreach, and we have a bunch of meetings, and three people show up. More people show up at the council meeting, because they know about it, than anything else. So I think we're okay. And I agree with that.
Okay.
Mayor, before we... Again, maybe, before we decide on... Are we about to decide on this here?
I don't think so. I think we're moving on.
I mean, I would like to see if there's public comment. Could we do that? I'm just curious if...
Well, we're gonna have public comment on everything. We're not having public comment.
But if we've already decided on this, then what's the purpose of having public comment?
We haven't... Jimmy, what is your takeaway?
I don't think there's any decision. We're workshop, so you can't really decide anything. I'm taking your input. I'm taking your feedback. You expect me to implement that, and so that's what I'll do. I'll, you know, there may be a situation here where we can have an item where you believe there won't be public backlash, and I do. And see how it goes? Okay.
I hope you're right.
[laughing]
All right, moving on. Okay. So I think we're good there. Let's go ahead and just, again, recap real quickly. You've seen these before. I won't go through these. These are the remaining items for both the downtown committee and unhoused committee. Those are on department work plans or the city's work plans. And so there are some that are in the middle of them, some that are still being worked on. So again, they haven't gone away. They're not dropping off. They're just, again, part of our work plan and parking management plan, like we said. We're, we're in the middle of that right now. And that will continue into next year. Okay, so let's go back to January 28th. And we talked about potential new legislative agenda items. And at that meeting, we said, "Just please throw everything out there, and we'll discuss it later." And so some of these things, we're going to work through with council to get, I think some of these could come off, because I think some of them we have updates for or we've made progress on. And others, I certainly understand they should stay on, maybe because they're mandatory. So I'll go ahead and start with sheltering and supporting residents in adverse weather or emergency situations. I would ask council to consider not making that a work plan item. I've certainly been doing that. It's something that we learned the hard way from one of our storms, when the county decided to close a shelter and didn't tell us. And so we got the message loud and clear that that's something that we need to do. And so I would ask that, if it pleases council, that that's just part of our normal work plan.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want consensus on some things here? Because I'm not feeling like we're doing consensus form. Okay, is there consensus to remove item one?
Yes.
Okay, yay.
Number two, regular reports on grants and other projects. We also believe as staff that the level we provide you is adequate in what's been requested. So we wouldn't recommend making any changes here or adding it to our work plan. But again, if, if that's the wish of council, but...
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll make a mention of it. The way you brought that back pretty fast in that format, I thought worked well. It was public. It was, it allowed us to ask questions based off that if we wanted to, because it was at a council meeting. And if that's not too much for you to be able to just, you know, remove stuff or update stuff, I, I thought that worked well. I thought, I liked that.
Okay, so is there consensus to remove two?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Wow, Jimmy, you're 2-0 already.
I'm not going to get cocky here.
We're just building you up.
Yeah, I know. This came in the legislative form, because we didn't really try to, you know, pigeonhole you in, but there was discussions on budgeting for the next two years of street funding. At this time, I plan to bring you a budget that has the years three and four being funded from one-time monies. And so unless council does not want me to do that, I will continue on that course.
So we already approved a five-year street maintenance plan. So this is just the funding for years, right, three and four. So consensus to keep going with that, right?
Continue.
Okay, good. Yes, consensus.
Okay. Planning for a community youth center. We've talked about this extensively. It will be a recommendation from myself that we redo the Civic Center master plan and evaluate our recreation facilities. So I don't think that needs to be on council legislative item. That'll be in my work plan as it is.
So we don't even need consensus on that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Good, because I agree it should be there.
Following Resolution 22-16, IRS Section 115 Trust Savings Allocation Policy. This is, like I said, not exactly a legislative item, because we have the policy. But as Harjo mentioned to you earlier, we will spend some time talking to council about what we need to be doing. So that would be on Harjo's work plan, not necessarily need to be on council if that, that serves council, okay?
So do you need a council consensus on that?
It would help.
Okay.
Just want to make sure nobody is against it.
Everybody support that we not have to reduce workforce in 2030? Okay. Okay, yay. Okay, yes.
Downtown parklets, it is on, I believe, the council's work plan. It's also on community development work plan. So we went back and looked, and so we'll be bringing that forward. We don't need council direction for that. We'll do it.
Jim, I'm sorry. Downtown, on the parklets, you don't need council direction, is that what you said?
Not to move the item forward.
Okay.
But we'll need policy direction from council.
Okay, good. Because there's, there's other cities, they're not, it's not all positive things. There are some negative things to parklets. And so just want to make sure that we all hear those things at some point.
And one of the hang-ups with that was the downtown parking plan. So we said, "Once we get done with that plan, then we'll have the inventory and understand what that does to parking when you have parklets."
Very good.
Well, on the, I mean, I, I understand the mayor's point on that, but from my participation in the parking management workshop, it was stated over and over that park, parklets bring businesses to downtown. So I would, I would be the opposite.
No, I meant with health, food, health regulations and things, food going outside. Yeah.
Gilroy Outlets, explore alternative funding streams for sales tax revenues. I don't remember a lot about this one, but it was thrown out there. So one, I would appreciate if there, whoever in council...
I did, but it wasn't related to the outlets.
Okay.
It's like other cities use alternative, are, are bringing in different types of businesses that bring other types of, that bring revenue in in a different way. Yeah. If I need to be explicit about it, there's cannabis, the cannabis revenue that comes to Hollister and Watsonville in San Jose from Gilroy residents, that significant amount that our residents spend in other cities that have cannabis dispensaries. Yeah. And the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we could be spending, you know, on our parks and recreation staff, any number of these things. So I don't know if we've ever even explored it. I don't, I, I think I remember being on the planning commission, we didn't explore it. We didn't even want to direct staff to explore it, but...
Okay, so then we definitely need to see if there's council consensus for that one. So I would be a, a no on that one. Councilmember Brocco, no? No?
Well, it's, again, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So exploring alternative funding streams, right? I mean, we don't have to go into the specifics, but we can explore alternative streams, right?
Well, I think that goes without saying, if you're not getting into specifics.
Well, I mean, if it's...
Okay. She, she brought it forward, and she just said what, one of the example that she meant. So that's what we're talking about.
Well...
And I'm sure there's other, I mean, we have tourism, we have other things that we're, we've been talking about, right?
Right, tourism would go through visit Gilroy.
To replace our sales tax revenues, right, that are, as we lose more brick and mortars and more outlets closed down and stuff.
And that was my thinking of why I would support that.
Well, you were just, you're just talking about bringing in... You can support it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That was what my thinking is.
So, Councilmember...
What other tax revenue?
That's true. Hilton? You just gave one example, so...
But I know cannabis is a huge undertaking in terms of, like, the study of it, right, and the impact on the city, so...
I think I would support that in the broad sense of other businesses that are coming in.
Yeah, I would support that too.
I'm, I'm not, I don't think we're talking about one specific.
No.
Yeah, I would support it.
No. I would.
Yeah, so it's one, two, I know, it's three. Jimmy, I'm uncomfortable, though, leaving it that open. Are you, are you, because what, what are you taking from that?
I, I do think we have to get a little more specific.
Yeah, it can't just be what you guys are saying.
This is what we do all the time, to be honest with you.
I guess, from my viewpoint, it's, it's, we're saying to you, "Continue." That's how...
But that's not what this is then, okay?
Well, he says they do that all the time. So I see the council saying to you, "Please continue. Please continue to, to keep exploring businesses coming to Gilroy."
Then this doesn't need to be there then, though.
Right, and that's so...
Well, if that doesn't need to be there, then your vote would be no, not yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying, to take it off. Okay.
Like, of course, I think we need to explore cannabis as a sales tax revenue.
I do not, though. You're saying that.
No, but I'm not finished, man.
I know.
So I just, I don't think we have the capacity for it for this year. So I'll, I'll rescind it, yeah, for this year.
Okay, so now is there consensus to remove seven? Or are there people who, you know what, we have, we have a majority that said remove seven, so that's all we need. Okay, so seven is removed.
Okay, number eight, that was brought with services for homeless, unhoused, explore additional funding, services, tiny homes, and other options. I think this one kind of falls along some of the others where those are programs we are doing. We continue to work on those things. Does it need to be an additional work plan item? I don't know unless there's a specific program or something that we're being asked to look into, but we, we do have some momentum on that topic.
So then looking for, oh, go ahead.
Jimmy, we keep hearing stuff out in the public, and I'd like to get more information about, have we left money on the table and were able to get a grant for three people to work in the city, working with the homeless, and we didn't take it? I'd like to get more information about what's available to us at the county and state level.
I can make that as part of our, we, you know, we've committed to doing a grant report to council. It gives you the list of all the grants. We can include that in ones that, I can be honest with you, it's very rare we don't explore a grant or turn one down. And the majority of the reason why we would turn something down is that the match is astronomical. But we've not been one to shy away from free money.
Okay, so is there consensus to remove eight? I'm seeing heads shaking, but I'm not...
Yeah, well, as, but I think, Jimmy, you're saying you're going to still continue exploring and reporting on it, correct? So I just feel uncomfortable with his worded that way, because it makes it sound like we're getting rid of it. And we're not. It's just continuing. So, so yes, I guess you could take it off, since we're still doing it. God, that sounds like a double negative.
No, no, I think you're saying it right, though, because like, number one and number two, he's like, "We do that. Well, I'll, I'll take that in. You don't need to keep that on your legislative item." I think you're doing it right.
Okay. Yeah, he was just saying that eight, we do stuff, and unless there's something more, like you have a specific thing that you're adding, so... Okay, so eight is removed.
Okay.
Okay?
Number nine, which is AB 2234, which is billing permits for affordable housing. We're required to do that, state law. I think, again, like with some of these, it's just a reminder for council members that, and that will be on the community development work plan. So again, I, I think that's covered. I don't think we need any further direction.
Okay. Yeah, that, so that one can be removed because it's being done?
Well, it has to be done.
It's not really a policy issue.
Yeah. We, we did this on purpose. We, we didn't want, at that meeting on January 26th, oh, no, that's not a good idea, because it shuts down creativity. It shuts down, and now, now we're telling you what the practicality is of some of these things. So, you know, it's just a, it's a good exercise to go through.
Okay.
The next one is transit-first policy. I know that there are some cities that have that. San Francisco's had one for numerous years, so I'd like to see if that's something that council wants to explore. I know, maybe you could give us some more background.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to talk too much about it. I'm more or less, like, I want to clarify any questions that anybody has or what the purpose.
This is something San Francisco has?
Yes.
You're comparing us to San Francisco?
San Jose has it too.
Okay, another large city. So how would it affect Gilroy? So yes, do you explain?
Okay, so this came back from the, the VTA PAC meeting back in January, where they had, they made a presentation on San Jose, who had a transit-first policy. But they made a pitch basically to all the cities to develop this type of policy. And apparently, their staff has already been in touch with our staff and talking about the benefits of it. The, the transit-first priority policies are used by cities to improve travel speed, reliability, and overall appeal of public transit, and make public transit operations more cost-effective. One of the main reasons why they did this is because of, of operational budget. So over time, buses have slowed down from 14 miles an hour to 11 miles an hour, 20% over the last three decades. And it's because of congestion, it's because of traffic, but at the same time, there's no priority given as buses come, or light rail, come into intersections. So it could be a soft, behind-the-scenes thing that none of us would even notice, where if they do a development or they're, they're redoing an intersection, that they, they have cameras now that are already on our poles that can basically detect if a bus is coming through and give it maybe three or four more seconds on that green light rather than do the automatic switch. So it'd be something you wouldn't even, like, pay attention or understand to. But there's three decades of adding buses to slowing routes of amounts to $70 million of efficiency.
Okay. Okay. I sit on the VTA board, so I'm very, and I've been with VTA, working with VTA for like, five years. And I'm, none of these things apply to Gilroy. We don't have those same issues. We don't have light rail. We don't have buses that need to get through a light faster. They are issues up in San Jose. So I'm, I'm just going to say that this is certainly not something that we need yet. If we ever get the transportation that I've been fighting for here, then absolutely.
Actually, there's three buses, and you know this. And this point is not for me and you to argue back and forth. This is clarifying questions for everybody. It's great that you understand it. But we do have the 68, which has a 15-minute head count, or, you know, and you know that. We also have the 568, and you know that, and the 121.
What does that mean by that? A 15-minute what?
So 15-minute headways, which means that every 15 minutes, the bus should be there at the bus stop. And the reason why this policy like this will help improve that and not get that worse, because what happens is that if they promise a 15-minute headway, well, let's say it expands out to 20 minutes, they add another bus. That's where you start adding more to the, to the, to the deficit up there.
I feel like with our transit, our public transit, it's like chicken and, or the egg, right? If we don't have the ridership, then they don't pay attention to us and try to allocate resources. And I feel like this policy helps, this policy helps make improvements that make public transit more attractive and more feasible for people who need to use it.
That is true. And I want you to zone in on just thinking about the Monterey corridor, just think about the 68 line, right, which has high ridership, and that's why it's funded, and the mayor knows that. So that's why, that's why we're focused. Just focus on that. Don't focus on the ones that go for every hour.
Okay, if you're, if you're asking for just the 68 bus, then that's what you should say. Because otherwise, Gilroy, which is part of Santa Clara County, shouldn't be compared, it's the argument I've been making at VTA and Caltrain, our ridership numbers can't be compared to other cities, because we're the only city with Morgan Hill, Gilroy and Morgan Hill, that doesn't have the same level of transit service, either train or bus. And ridership is absolutely driven by frequency. And we have the least frequency, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, because more people might ride if we had the same frequency that other cities do.
And how do we get that frequency?
By having more buses and more trains.
Okay.
That's how you get the frequency.
Is there any, is there any benefit to this policy to getting us more buses and more trains?
Not, not yet, as I see it. It's too...
That's not the point of the...
Does it set the path?
Yes. You, you want to talk about being, playing nice in, in an atmosphere, you know, especially with the, with the policy, like a transit-first policy, it's not funding, you're not adding anything extra. We already do this. There's a development that's happening right now that's, that's going through, is environmental review, where, where they're requiring the developer to make enhancements to the bus stop in front.
Okay, so Jimmy, maybe you need to tell us what this means of staff, because at this point, this is, council's trying to prioritize. And where does this fall under the list of items, things that are important?
And also, at the same time, if anybody else has questions, that's what this is for.
I guess, if I may, Jimmy, I mean, for me, someone who takes the 68 and the 568 and, you know, you know, everything, light rail and the train, I mean, again, I think that was a good question that Councilmember Al Maderas asked, will this help, you know, bring more of these to Gilroy? But again, I also want to know, I guess the question the mayor just asked, how much staff time is this going to, you know, put on us? But I would have voted in favor of it, because someone who's been using public transportation for 20, 30 years, I, I see it as a benefit, so...
Thank you for using public transportation.
Actually, I'm going to ask our community development director to come help you through the next three. Because I, I'm quite, we're, we're in the details, which is fine, and that's good to place, but I can't help you there. And I think Sharon has spent a lot of time on these topics and can give you a better answer than I could.
Okay.
So...
Karen?
Is there anyone here? Is there a microphone?
Thank you. Okay, so do you want me to just expand a little bit on the transit?
10, 11, and 12.
Yeah. We definitely focusing on transit-oriented development. And actually, I think a lot of state laws over the last couple of years have been kind of requiring us to go toward that. So, you know, just kind of speaking to one of the examples from Councilmember Hilton. Like, for example, one of the state laws that was passed last year that became effective this year, January 1st, it pretty much, really doesn't, you know, let cities put on additional, any parking requirements. I shouldn't say additional, just no parking requirements if they're within half mile of transit. So those are things we're implementing already through state legislation.
Sharon, just to clarify for, for everybody, that's if it's within 15, within a half a mile of transit, or whatever the distance is, transit that comes with a frequency of every 15 minutes.
Correct.
And we only have the 68 bus for that, which would mean only along Monterey. Okay.
Yes.
So just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yes, they're all around definition.
It's not around any transit. It's just around transit that comes every 15 minutes. And we have only one thing that does that.
One of the five routes, only one does?
No, no, no. One of the, yes, only one bus in Gilroy, whether it circulates through Gilroy or goes out of Gilroy, which is what the 568 and 68 do. They go out of Gilroy. Only the 68 comes every 15 minutes. Not even a train comes every 15 minutes. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that was it. On that one?
Well, I guess what I would like to know is how much staff time would be, would be needed to deal with this, as it seems like we're not really ready as a city to jump into this transit-first policy because of our, our size and the low ridership.
funded, the reason why it was funded is because of ridership?
Not arguing with the 68.
Okay, so-
It's not a commute bus, though, it's not a bus that gets people to their jobs.
Oh, come on, you gotta be kidding me, seriously?
The folks that I know that take the 68, that's-
So Councilmember Tovar doesn't need to go to his job?
He doesn't take the, you take the 568, don't you?
I took, I sometimes had to take the 68.
Okay, let's retract that and get back to what-
Historically, it was the 68.
Can you see how it would help us, like, it would help, it would help to keep those, let's just get it really down, if, on the 68, it would help to keep that, every 15 minutes, the person that's relying to get to their job, to not, to not allow VTA to say, well, I can't meet at 15 minutes anymore because your guy's downtown corridor is only two lanes, and it takes our buses forever to get through there, but what you could do, the city of Gilroy, is really help us out by changing the way the lights work, so that way, if there's a bus that's coming through, and it's about to turn red on that bus, it gives them an extra three or four seconds to go through, that's how this will make an impact.
I understand that part, but I'm wondering how many people would really be using that bus, that this would real, that this would matter?
The 68 is heavily used, it was one of the ones that was funded.
So you're saying the 68 then would be the only one that'd be affected by, by these lights?
Yes, that we could actually help them.
That would help them to get up to San Jose.
Or down, or back home to Gilroy.
You know.
Or Morgan Hill.
Or Morgan Hill.
Okay, let's let Sharon finish.
Okay, the staff time, yeah, how much staff time would you need?
I think staff time could depend on kind of the scope of what, you know, elements you would like to study, like, you know, I mentioned, some of the aspects, as far as transit-oriented development, we are kind of implementing state laws already, but I think some of the, you know, elements I'm hearing, it's not necessarily, you know, related to development, but it's actually using transit and, and frequencies and, you know.
And, and just, just like the other ones you had, you had talked about, both of you, about like the, the drive-through, you know, over your residential and the beekeeping to, this is not something that we would just be like, I have no idea what this is going to do, and staff sits down and just starts writing, there are already models out there, we have partnerships on the VTA, they are willing to give technical assistance to us to help us write a policy, if not draft the same thing that the rest of the cities are trying to do, so we're all on the same page, so, yes, it is staff time, but just remember too, and they understand us too, that they can leverage another organization that is right here with us, that want to partner with us.
I guess that's what I want to hear, if I'm going to say yes to this, because we're, we're always hearing staff doesn't have enough time, so we're rearranging some of the items that we're talking about, and I don't want to see something else booted because staff doesn't have enough time to do it, because they're working on this, so do you think it's feasible for you to borrow or use someone else's plan to present to the council, where it doesn't take you hours and hours and hours to write something on your own?
I think we can utilize the VTA's technical assistance.
Okay.
And I, you know, don't know if, at this point, I can really give you a good sense of the exact amount of time, but after we explore that further.
Do you feel good about this? I mean, I don't want you sitting here going, oh my God, I just got something else a month late, and, you know.
We can't ask her that in front of her.
Yeah.
I would expect you to be honest with us, this is, we're, we're trying to, to look at projects.
Put her on the spot.
No, I, I, I mean no ill asking you that question.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that one approach is, might want to look at this from, you know, kind of the three categories we were thinking about earlier, if it's mandatory or core or discretionary, and the transit-oriented development, like I mentioned, you know, because of implementation of state law, that aspect would be mandatory, but I think some of the other aspects, you know, what we're talking about, are not necessarily-
Sharon, let me ask this, let me ask this question, and I think Councilmember Hilton just said, if there's already a policy like this in place from the VTA or from other cities, could we not just, again, instead of reinventing the wheel, just sort of use their model that's working and say, okay, you know what, let's just verify the information, make sure it works, fits Gilroy, and so it really reduces the amount of city staff time, we have something already there, you know, we're not inventing something here, it's, we have VTA or whomever has this in place, and, you know, if it's us reaching out to them, whatever it may be, then it kind of reduces the work on staff, and I, I appreciate all of you, and you guys all know that, but I hate making decisions based off of, well, we're giving city staff more work, and I, again, I understand where we're at, city staff-wise, but if it's an important policy, and again, it'll be what the majority of the council decides, but if there's already something in place, we can just utilize that, right?
Can I make a brief comment?
Yes.
That is always what we do, with any kind of policy like this, we look at other cities, we look at the VTA, we, then we try to figure out, does it make sense for Gilroy from what we know, and then we bring something to the council with what we think makes sense, it's not a simple process to do it, and I don't want to say it's, this particular one is difficult or not, but that is a process we always follow through, but it's never quite as simple, as you say.
Exactly, and that's what I was hoping that staff would tell us, what their position is, like, if we, if, if the majority of this council says keep that on, what is that going, what is that likely going to mean?
Could I offer a suggestion, and I think this is a very big piece, education needed, but there are some mandatory things that we need to do, so I'd ask council to let us start with the mandatory, bring that to you, and then you can identify some pieces that you want to work on together, that might be just a good foundation to start, because I think there's some education here that could be utilized, and there's interest too, so that, I think that would be a good balance, if that, if that's okay with council.
So you're saying leave it?
Leave it, but with the asterisk that we'll start with discretionary, I see, with mandatory, and then just see where we go.
Okay. So do we need to go through 11 and 12?
I would like to, yes.
Okay.
So for number 11, it is actually in our department's work plan to update the ADU ordinance per new state law, and for number 12, it is a carryover in our department's work plan too, and we just recently applied for a Caltrans grant to do this very work, you know, together with the VMT policy and the climate action plan.
Going back to number 11, there is one, there is one piece of that ordinance that would be left to this council to make a decision on, that's not mandated by state law, and that is the maximum size that someone would be allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit in their backyard, state law says that you can do a max of 1,200 square feet, when, when state law required this city to do the ADU ordinance, staff, or I don't, I'm not sure how it got derived, but they found that, the decision was made that the maximum ADU would be 1,000 square feet, it, it is my opinion that that, that's a barrier to housing, 200 square feet could be two bedrooms, it could be one bedroom, one bath, it could be any one of us that want to, you know, age in place and live in our own, our own properties and not have to have the capital cost to move somewhere else, and I could rent out the house that's, you know, that's in front of me for income, so, to me, that's an, that's a barrier, and it's also something that we promised the state we would do in our housing element, that we would break down as many barriers as we can, and ADUs, the language, not only are out of compliance with state on the ADU that, and, and staff understands that, but if we're going to put that forth as like, hey, this is how we're planning on building housing, ADU is a part of that, but at the same time, we have a little tiny clause in there that says we're not going to let you build as much as we, where you're allowed to build, so that is, that's a question that I want to see if there's consensus to, when that comes back, that policy, to expand it to 1,200 square feet.
That is actually staff's plan, because of the, you know, the approach we've been taking in the housing element is to try to make it, you know, as streamlined as possible, and to be basically, you know, all compliant with state law, and to, you know, if possible, to make it even easier, so that is the plan, is to, yes, update the ordinance.
Okay, so does some consensus need to be reached here, Jimmy, or is it already happening, and that's coming back?
I don't think it's necessary for council to have it as an added item.
Okay.
We have it, we've got direction, it'll be coming back to you.
Well, the direction is reviewing it, that council, I was asking, because council direction is not to increase the square footage above what the state law is.
Right, but the-
It might be, but it's not yet.
But that, as, as I said, we committed to doing that in our housing element.
Okay.
So we have to follow through with that.
Okay. Okay, so is that something that requires any public outreach for that, or that's just part of what's, in the housing element, it's going to automatically increase the allowable square footage of ADUs?
Yeah, just for some reason, a couple of years ago, when staff did the update, you know, they did a square footage that's different from the state law would allow, but in this time around, you know, we are going to make it all align with state law, so.
It was a council decision.
I'm sorry, just a second, okay?
It was a council decision last time, there was discussion about 800, 1,000, 1,200 feet.
Prior councils, not this council, yes.
No, that's correct, when, when the ADU ordinance was initially adopted pursuant to state law.
Yeah, started at 600, 800, then a lot of-
Right.
There was a lot of discussion about this, so it's not, it wasn't done in the vacuum at all.
It came to the planning permission, and we voted to expand it to the maximum allowable, and then it went to council, and council denied it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll come back to council again.
But coming back at what state law is, is that what I heard you say?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And it'll be part of the whole zoning corrupt day.
Okay.
And number 12? Yes, I think I mentioned that earlier, we applied for a Caltrans grant to do-
Yeah, I'm sorry, what I meant was, do we need a council consensus on it or not?
I don't think we do, because we're going to bring that back either way, we either have the grant, or we will recommend that we fund it through one-time monies.
Okay.
The last one.
All right. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
I think this might be a good time, if council's okay with me opening public comment, because I think public has been an hour and a half, so I assume we have some people who want to speak, is that true, Ty?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have four speaker cards.
Four speaker cards, okay.
Let me just say the four speakers here in order.
Okay.
The first speaker is going to be Terrence Fugazi, followed by Anne Marie McCauley, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Angelica Bonifacio.
Okay, the three minute, the usual three minutes, everybody.
And the speaker timer is going to be on the big screen over there.
Okay.
Well, another meeting, council and mayor, thank you for doing this, and obviously, it's a great thing for the public, big thank you to Jimmy and the city staff, who recently focused their enforcement on all the illegally parked RVs and the trash associated with them and everything, both on Auto Mall Parkway and also Solachi, I drove by there just over the weekend, and Solachi, wow, I mean, what, what an improvement, it really shows that enforcement of all of our code and laws that are on the books works, that there are things that we can do, and this is the right way of maintaining order and the quality of life, the real quality of life for Gilroy citizens, there's much more to do, enforcement of our city code is the answer to many of these issues we see, and that many of us complain about in the city, and without this enforcement, there is no deterrence, people are not deterred from the behaviors we have decided that we don't want in our city, and it's all described in our city code, and in looking at what you guys showed here, there are things that are mandatory, enforcing our city code, I think, is probably pretty mandatory, got a couple of examples that, to mention, section 5B, it's a comprehensive section in the Gilroy municipal code for combating blight, it's quite extensive, and it can be applied to the businesses all around the city, obviously, it's got residential too, even downtown vacancies and boarded-up buildings can be put under this blight, so I know you guys are looking at other ordinances, we have a hard time already enforcing the ones that we have, you guys even have, as a council, the power to enforce that with levies and making people actually take action on those properties, and, and putting it on them and charging them for that to enforce that, signage, we've got a lot of issues of signage in the city that's not being enforced according to the code, I'll just tell you one, which is the feather signs that are showing up all over town, there is an ordinance specifically for feather signs, eventually, it makes the entire town look like a used car lot, and there's some on city property, there's some all over the place, and these are the ones that are vertical and flap all around, a couple of other points, I won't have time on graffiti, but there is some graffiti on city signs that needs to be dealt with, including the gateway coming in on 152 from the west, it's actually been there over three weeks, and over a week since I reported it, basically, all I want to do is make a plea to you guys to ask Jimmy, what's it going to take for, you know, for him to be able to enforce everything that we have in these regulations, give priority to these effort, these mandatory things, and make those funds available so he can make it happen, and not look at all the nice-to-haves just, you know, before we do the must-haves, thank you.
Thank you, all right, next speaker. Hello.
My name is Anne Marie McCauley, and I'm here to support the mayor and the council in unifying the city of Gilroy by combining the efforts of the city, nonprofits, law enforcement, and citizens to address our homeless situation, I will take solutions and resources from every direction to tackle this urban problem in our small town, I've been asking other cities how they're addressing the problem, and was made aware of a grant from Destination Home to employ a team of city housing coordinators, I would like to ask the council to look into or apply for this grant, as of now, there is no city connection to the nonprofits, county resources, representation for Gilroy at county meetings, and more immediately, the end of the state-funded rent support, potentially adding hundreds of homeless to our city this year, in our genuine attempt to find out why our homeless population continues to grow, it's important that the city has a team that can navigate the resources and report honestly on what's working and what isn't, our housed citizens deserve accurate information, this issue is complicated, but in the last few months of my involvement, I have found a strong community and city leaders who want to unify and help, I am grateful for the funding approved by our city council, it would be helpful for the city to have staff funded by the grant to confirm how these funds are spent, again, the housed residents are asking these questions, a retired athlete and a resident of Gilroy explained to me how true courage is gained, it's going into the games you know you're going to lose, your team, your coach, even your opponent feels bad at first, there's dread, you have to realize the real victory comes from having the courage to face the fear, if you have to play the long game, not just for the team, but for personal integrity, in this game, a win may not feel like a victory, but Gilroy needs to play the long game, we can't back away from this issue because it's hard, and we have people we don't like that we have to play with, we can be fearless in facing the seemingly unsurmountable opponent when we realize it's not each other that we're fighting, when our leaders join forces and bring together our community, we will win the battle of division, and unity will become our victory, mayor, council, I am asking you to unify the city, nonprofits, police, and community, and play the long game together, let's use this issue to make Gilroy stronger, let's create, start by creating a winning team.
Thank you. Next, next speaker.
Good evening, mayor, community, council, my name's Ron Kirkish, I'm a citizen of Gilroy, the reason why I'm speaking up tonight is, we, on several occasions now, sitting in the cheap seats, I've listened to Mr. Tovar, Councilman Tovar, bringing up this issue of lights, probably on three or more occasions, he's very passionate, and I, I understand his passion, and I appreciate it, my concern, though, is that I think we should stay with the original program, and the reason I say that is because we don't know what the ramifications will be by lighting up the whole city, I think that we can take the, take the initial stance that we have, and see what it will cost to, to run the lights downtown, what will the maintenance be to replace those lights, and the cost, and the, and the labor, and the, and the problems we have with them, so I think staying with the original plan would probably be beneficial so that we can see down the road what we could expect, and if we really want to do something like that, thank you.
Thank you, and was there one more?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it is Angelica Bonifacio.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, community, Angelica Bonifacio, resident of Gilroy for the past eight years, and small business owner, and I would like to also touch on the overlight for downtown, I've had the opportunity to hear from Council Tovar, as well as meet Council Marks, and I really am inspired by their vision for downtown, it takes, it, it takes gold, it's golden to want to pour back into the community here, originally from San Jose, I still commute to San Jose, I have to go to San Jose for our entertainment, and we have a family that we're raising, we would love the opportunity to light up, maybe not all of downtown, maybe part of it, maybe bring a couple of different visions together, whether it be tree lighting, right, on the trunks, as well as overhead lighting, I think it would be pretty encouraging for the five different generations that we try and maintain in our family, from our teenagers to great-grandmother and grandfather, we like to take them out, we like to host family from out of town, in fact, I've had someone from Irvine come and visit, as well as San Francisco, and they ask, what's downtown? But when it's a little dim down there, I'm not too enthused to bring them to my downtown, which is sad, part of the reason of coming to Gilroy was the small-town feel, but also just knowing there's forward-thinking vision with different council members that come through, and again, I'd like to extend my appreciation to the council members in sharing your vision for what you have for the town here, again, I'm going to touch on the homelessness, although it's not going to solve it, I think the more light this, that is in the town, it might just improve it a little bit, because you're bringing more light to that, I can't proudly, as a mother, say, I will let my daughter or son ride their bike to downtown in the evening, maybe at 7:00 PM for a quick bite, because it's just a little too dark and sketchy, but I would feel a little more safe if there's more lighting for them, not only that, again, I'd love to bring my great-grandmother out and not have to drive her back to San Jose where she visits from, I'd like to showcase downtown Gilroy, I came into Gilroy looking at the business plan and all the residents that were coming through, and I just feel that all the lighting you see down First Street, over by Brew City, can be brought to downtown and balance out the traffic flow through downtown, as well as off 152, thank you for having me speak.
Thank you. All right, does that, did any others show up, or are we-
Those were the last speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comment, and coming back, so Jimmy, do you want to continue?
Okay, I'm going to take the last few minutes we have here to talk to you, I'm going to show you, give you a sneak peek on the departmental work plans, I'm not going to go through everything, but I want to kind of point out some of the mandated things that we're going to be adding, because it's important for everyone to know that a lot that gets pushed onto us is not by our choice, but we still have to do it, so, if, Bryce, can you go ahead and load up the spreadsheets, and then, we'll just go through this real quickly, and start with administration, and so, as you can see, the majority of items that are in administration are core and discretionary, because most of them are generated by council, council rarely generates a mandatory, you know, type of workflow item, so this is what we have for now, and you've seen this before, so we're not going to belabor this a little bit.
This is the same thing that was in our agenda package last week?
Yeah, the only thing that's different is that we did add some of the ones that were in the 12, and then we, and that way, we'll pull those off according to what happened tonight, but we've added nothing other than, you know, than what's already in the work plan, and that, and what's mandated, or that we're adding to the work plan, so I'll send this out to council again, just to make sure you don't have any version issues, okay, and then we have, Bryce, this is hard, Bryce, can you zoom in a little bit? Yeah, this is admin services, and a lot of this is mandated, you've seen these before, and go down to what's added, yeah, those are the remaining, and then new, so this is what you'll see when we come back in May, is there'll be the new ones that are mostly either things we have to do or core, especially as, you know, in admin services, we're talking about fleet replacement, you know, old city hall, HVAC, it's not mandatory, but it's core, and so those will be some of the one-time things that we have in there, old premier building demolition, or what we're going to do with that, disposal of city properties that have been vacant, the old chamber building at IOF, so, a lot of those things that we're going to be working on the next year, let's go to the next one, and so you still see the remaining ones, so the ones you're wondering, are those going to follow off, we've already, those are in the work plan for the next two years, climate action plan, general plan housing element, we'll be finishing these up, and then if you go, this is really important here for this one, this is community development, and you can see the mandated ones that were pushed, or put on, community development, we didn't create work plan items, they were created for us, so, community development has a lot coming, and I seriously have to look at the resources that we have for them, but that's what's unfortunate about some of these mandated items, I'm not questioning the policy rights or wrong, I'm just telling you, at the end of the day, when the mandates come, we have to figure out a way to do it, and that's not always so easy, but you can see a lot is, especially in the community development area, is being mandated, let's go to public works. Now, there's public works, again, some new things, wide storm drain, trash capture program, we have no funding source for that, but we will be implementing that, SB 1383, solid waste reporting enforcement, again, most of the things you're seeing on here are either remaining or mandated, and after helping us go through this list tonight, we'll be able to, to really refine this, and bring you a final work plan at the beginning of May, and for your adoption in June, so, again, I'll send, I'll send this out to you so you have it, but just to give you kind of a concept of where we're heading, and what you can expect to see, it won't be a lot of surprises, because we've heard from you, you've heard from us in this meeting, and so, let's go back- be able to really refine this and bring you a final work plan at the beginning of May and for your adoption in June. So, again, I'll send this out to you so you have it, but just to give you kind of a concept of where we're heading and what you can expect to see. There won't be a lot of surprises, because we've heard from you, you've heard from us in this meeting, and so, let's go back to the slide two. Okay, so to finish up, staff, staff will prepare clean versions of the department work plan documents, so this will be all cleaned up, taking your impact input and all the things that staff is recommending, and we will return to council during budget introduction. We will identify what staffing, what items are achievable, and which will be worked on if resources permit. There may be some instances where we do, you know, we do add some staff, but it will be very strategic, and if we absolutely have to, or we have a funding source, but as you saw, the five-year forecast doesn't have a lot of room for adding staff, unfortunately. Staff will incorporate their work plans into the budget proposal and identify any funding allocated to each of the work plan tasks at budget introduction. And then staff will continue its process of providing routine updates on progress within the next two years. We typically have brought a work plan update to you quarterly or semiannually, we'll be doing a budget update, so we'll continue to do so. The last slide that I have for you is a reminder of the budget calendar, I just put it in there twice, now that you've completed tonight. The next time we will come talk to council directly about the budget will be May 1st. So our departments will be busy taking the work plans, lining them up with the resources, and putting this all together for the next two-year plan, and which you'll be able to review again before you have to approve. So, that concludes our formal presentation. It was very helpful to us as staff, we appreciate council's work on this. I think we've been in strategic planning, budget, and all that now for about 10 to 12 hours, so we'll give you a little bit of break, but we'll be back in May and ready for more things for you to consider. But I could answer any questions you have, and if not, then that concludes the workshop.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. Do I need to formally adjourn?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we are adjourned.